Upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Ms. Johnson, if you call roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Blade.
Present.
Burks.
Present.
Butler.
Present.
Callie.
Here.
Jenkins.
Present.
Qualls.
Here.
Shulist.
Present.
Senyard.
Present.
Thank you. We'll go to approval of the agenda. I'd like to add on bonds, new business to, or on bonds to Fernble Spring's apartments, a performance bond. I'd like to make some, make a motion.
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Second. Blade, Anderson, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Go to citizens comments. Thank you, ma'am. Go to approval of minutes from the August 11th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jenkins, Blade, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move to new business. Item one, site plan, Wynwood Park subdivision, phase two, 22 building lots on 5.75 acres, map 21 parcel 61.06, property owners Boulevard Homes. Mr. Jenkins, if I could get you to read staff comments for me, please.
Prior to pre-construction meeting, the plan shall be revised to provide calls for vegetation plannings within each of the impacted or replacement stream buffers for review and approval prior to the city issuing a grading permit. The current TDEC permit only includes phase one in the permit with 20 lots. Prior to issuing grading permit, revisions to the submitted construction general permit will be required to be approved and listed as active by TDEC. The plan shall be revised to add energy dissipation measures to reduce erosion due to concentrated flow from roadway drainage at the proposed ditch inlets adjacent to Cox Pike. These measures shall be provided for review and approval by city staff prior to issuing grading permit. Upon approval of Water Authority of Dixon County requirements, including pavement of the access road to the treatment area, all WADC plan modifications will be completed prior to pre-construction meeting. Staff recommends approval of site plan, action by the planning commission, motion for approval or disapproval of the Wynwood Park subdivision phase two site plan.
Thank you, sir. Staff, have anything else for us that, that sums it up?
I think that really sums it up, and I know there are a couple of comments there. A lot of these comments are things that you are more time sensitive, so I like the TDEC permit and such, getting that once we get ready for the pre-construction meeting so that it's not something that's held out for months before the pre-construction meeting. At that point, it's a, a new permit and can be added to that point. That, and then Water Authority comments, they've got a couple of small things that are kind of out of our control. So I know there are some staff comments, but they're, they're pretty small or time sensitive, and that's the reason they are still comments.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion?
Take a motion to approve phase two, a site plan of Wynwood Park subdivision upon the inclusion of the staff comments.
We have first.
I second.
Second. Burks, Qualls, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry. I'll do, uh, I will do a roll call vote. I'll just fix that. Is that okay? Or do you want me to proceed? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on that one real quick. I apologize.
Burks.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Anderson.
Uh.
Blade.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Callie.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Shulist.
Aye.
Senyard.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Still getting used to that there. Item two on new business, master development plan, Westview subdivision, 250 building lots on 108 acres, map 46 parcel 44, property owners Kathy Biata. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read the staff comments for me, please.
Sure. A side setback variance is being requested from seven and a half feet to five feet. Sidewalk variance is being requested to reduce the required length by 885 feet along the south side of the primary access road and along the lot frontage. Staff recommends widening Overby Road from the side access to Highway 100. Currently, the roadway width is approximately 18 feet, and the development is expected to generate up to 245 new vehicle trips during the PM peak hour. Staff recommends the development incur the off-site improvement costs associated with the widening of Overby Road to accommodate 12-foot lanes in each direction and adjust utilities as necessary. Stume alterations will likely require an aquatic resource alteration permit and will be addressed with each phase of construction plans. Stormwater time of concentration and exact locations of catch basins will be addressed with each phase of construction plans. Upon approval of Water Authority of Dixon County requirements, all WADC elements will be required on the site construction plans with each phase. Staff recommends approval of master development plan based on comments, and action by the planning commission is for motion for a positive or negative recommendation of the Westview subdivision master development plan.
Thank you, sir. We have Representative Knight wants to speak. Mr. Lowry, if you could speak, state your name for us.
My name is David Lowry. I'm with David Weekly Homes. Thank you for considering our project. We are, David Weekly Homes is the largest probably-held home builder in the country, and we have been looking at Fairview for a while now. We feel like we've found the right spot for us, so we're excited about the project. We are in agreement with all the recommendations that the staff has, has recommended, with the exception of the widening of, of Overby. We, we would ask that that be removed from the, from the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. I'm gonna introduce Blake Turner from T-Square Engineering, and he will address that further. If you have any questions for me or for my engineering, engineering staff, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Blake Turner with T-Square Engineering. I just kind of state some of the facts that would be incorporated with the widening of Overby Road from the side access to the highway. It's approximately half a mile in distance along that, that route. Currently, the lane widths along Overby Road are nine foot each, so 18 feet of lane width, and then about one foot shoulders on either side. The right-of-way out there along the route is about 30 feet. And in order for us to get the widening into 12-foot lanes with an additional one-foot shoulder to match the cross-section, we'd have to purchase right-of-way along Overby Road. There are approximately 18, not approximately, there are 18 different properties along Overby Road that we'd have to purchase right-of-way from. That's a very difficult prospect, considering we're not a public entity. The First Baptist Church parking lot and its lighting for the parking lot is within nine foot and eight foot of the edge of pavement of Overby Road. So with the widening, the ditch section, and the grading that we have to do to get that road widened, we'd be cutting into that parking lot, taking down their lighting, and so forth. We analyzed Overby Road when we saw this recommendation, and we, we analyzed it as a, as a corridor, and with the addition of generated traffic volumes from this development, it'll operate at a level service B, which is, which is well over acceptable ranges for the situation. Additionally, for a low-volume residential road, residential road or a road that's within a residential area such as Overby, it meets the minimum standards within the Green Book, which is the design of highways and streets, which is a national book that we all base our, our designs off of. Nine-foot shoulders, one, or one-foot shoulders, nine-foot lanes. So it falls within the recommended criteria. It still operates at acceptable levels of service, which is a level service B. And then finally, I just want to put this out there, in 2014, this property was approved for 350 units without any additional off-site roadway improvements needed. We're trying to amend this PUD to 250 units, so we're reducing the amount of traffic that's going to be in Overby Road, and we don't feel like off-site improvements with the amendment should be necessary. I can dig into more of the details if you want to, if you have any more questions. We analyzed the entire route, we analyzed the access, we know all the traffic volumes. So any questions you have that I can answer to help resolve the issues, please feel free to ask me now.
One question, if you were not to widen the road, but come in and, and tear up the road bed and, and do the betterments and improvements to the subbase of that road bed and then re-surface it, if it stayed the same width, would that be considered by you all?
I don't believe so. I mean, when we went out there and drove it, the road looks pretty good in that half-mile section. Now, I don't know what it's like north of our site, but the pavement condition out there is really good.
I know, but once you get all your construction completed, it may not be, so. Anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. For those, my name's Scott Collins. I'm the city manager here for the City of Fairview. I want to go over one thing just quickly. We have a document camera. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this up, and I'm gonna hand this to Randy, and she can pull it up there, and just kind of show you.
Kind of pull this off just, just to speak to this. So what, what we're looking at, and I'll pull, I'll point to the screen to the left, subdivision is back, this is Overby Road. This is First Baptist, this is the church. Making your way down Overby Road, there's a sign along this road that lists that road as Overby Road East is how, how the signage is now. This is considered Overby Road. There are a couple of things that, that we're gonna need to review as, as a part of this regarding off-site improvements, so I'll explain what those are. This property for the subdivision was annexed in, I believe, 2012 or early 2013 as it came to the city, and as a part of that annexation, the city annexed at the time what they called Overby Road, which was in their road annexation or how this property became contiguous, was they annexed Overby Road from Highway 100 to this site, so this site could in fact be included in the city limits, is how it, how it arrived there. So when, in that time, the annexation was what was considered Overby Road or is now considered Overby Road and Overby Road East. Subsequent to that annexation or the city's annexation of that road, there was a lawsuit that was filed in which several of the neighbors protested the annexation of what was then known as Givens Cut. For those of you who've been around for a while, and I have not, Overby Road actually runs this route along here. This is actually a curve of Overby Road. You can kind of see where the property line corners it, but the actual document shows it is curved. Overby Road effectively ran this route, and Givens Cut was this section. So as you look at the tax map, it appears that Overby Road runs this route, when in fact it runs this route. So for our purposes and after, as a part of this annexation, this road was annexed into the city, but as a settlement for the 2014 lawsuit, this section was removed or cut out from the annexation from the city. So as we sit here tonight and we have this discussion, this section of roadway is in fact not in the city limits of the city of Fairview. This section of roadway is in fact a part of the annexation for the city of Fairview. Given that, that presents a couple of issues. Number one, as was stated earlier, I believe this right-of-way, as it's drawn, is 27 feet wide, similar to here. The difficulty you have with that is the site distance at this intersection, and in reality, kind of looking at this in a broader sense, really, it makes sense for this to be Overby Road, and it makes sense for this to be Deer Ridge Road, so that Deer Ridge would effectively intersect with Overby and Overby be straight from a, from a strict traffic management standpoint. Understanding that, the city has control over this road and what happens on this road. The city does not have the ability to enact control over here. The site distance on Overby Road, as we know it, looking at this map, is really difficult. You can't see over your right shoulder for traffic this way, you really can't see left going that way. So it makes sense for this road to be the primary access road, or actually the only access road owned to Overby. Our suggestions or discussions internally, before we knew the issue that we have with the annexation of the road in the lawsuit, which honestly, I learned about the lawsuit yesterday, actually this last week, Friday, and we investigated it today. Our suggestions early on were to, to discuss with the developer not a widening of Overby Road for the length of the road, although, although that would be nice. A, a strong preference would be widening this road so that we could get a single lane of traffic from 100 to the subdivision and widen enough where we could get a right-hand turn off of Overby onto 100 and a left-hand turn for, for this distance alone. If we were able to do that, then our discussions internally and with the city council or BOC at its last meeting was to abandon this roadway by terminating this, this access point, where we would terminate this, cut a section over it, grass it, and then have this be the primary access point. That said, we don't have control over this, so there'd be some partnership with the county to move forward with that. So at a minimum, for the, the staff's recommendation would be a widening or access point at least from this, from this section to Highway 100, so we could utilize this site distance and safely get cars on and off of Highway 100 and off of Overby. So I'd be glad to answer any questions from anyone on that again. We're just trying to, to follow up on what, what we've learned in the last 16 working hours and, and make some suggestion to how this could function.
Real quick question. So who owns the, is it Givens Cut through? Is that what you referred to it as?
Williamson County.
Williamson County?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that, that section is actually public road. It's just public roadway owned by Williamson County, not the city of Fairview or managed. Now, it does appear that in 2013, when this annexation was, was completed the first time, that that annexation was filed with Williamson County. In 2014, when the lawsuit was settled with Ms. Givens and the city went back and rescinded or changed their annexation ordinance to remove this specific strip of property, it appears that the city in fact did not go back to the county and notice the county that that ordinance had changed. So if you look at the Williamson County tax map, it appears that this is city roadway and this is city roadway. However, as a part of that, the settlement for that lawsuit, this by the city's ordinance was removed from the annexation ordinance, if that makes any, any sense at all. So I know that complicates the matter just a little bit, but it, the, the staff is, through our review, at a minimum, would request not so much that the entire length of the road be widened, although that would be nice, but we, we would request that from this intersection, if we can call it that, for what is labeled Overby Road, what is actually Givens Cut, could be widened in such a way to facilitate the traffic to and from this area.
When you're, when you're saying widening, are you saying that you want the development to physically widen it, or would it be a pan-lu-ove option to widen it? Pan-lu-ove to the city to widen?
No, we want it widened.
What is it? I know I'm asking a bunch of questions, but what is the distance for that first property right there from the corner to the, the next property line? Just to know if we could get, it only affects one property owner, is what I'm trying to figure out.
From here?
That, the property to the, I guess that would be the west.
This? What is, what is the?
Do you know what that distance is, that property line right there?
From here to here? No, sir. I, I do, I do not. I believe when we looked it up, it was around 225 feet, although I would, 350 feet, even better.
You could get a right turn lane that would only affect one property owner.
Mr. Collins? You may not know the answer to this yet, but is there any chance that if you could get that annexed in, is there still that concern about the law, you know?
I, I don't believe so. I believe the settlement of that lawsuit effectively terminated the city's ability to go back and, and affect that.
In the same way, would we be able to get right-of-way acquisition? Would, do you think you'd be able to obtain that property for widening?
I, I, obviously, there are a couple of partners we would have to include in that. First, Williamson County. Second, the owner of that, of that property. We know that this intersection, basically the Deer Ridge Road intersection, if we can call it that for purposes of this discussion, would not be able to service the subdivision. So the only other way that we would be able to do that, and again, we would ask for some off-site improvements, would be to terminate this access and have everyone use one, one intersection. Some, one way or another, we're gonna need to make sure that only one of these is used to access Overby because of the traffic, and this intersection has the worst site distance in both directions, particularly if you are attempting to exit here. I could attempt to pronounce this name. I'm sure that I will get it wrong, as I did at the BOC meeting, but it's a Brentwood city resident.
Is there any potential of like one road being one direction, one road being the other flowing into that Overby Road? You know, so you could go left or right and not turn in the opposite direction?
I wouldn't think so, just because of the angles and the other issue you have. And again, this was not under our control, so we wouldn't be able to go back with that and, and affect that.
Mr. Collins, is, does Ms. Givens own that land to the west of Givens Cut?
I believe she does.
Okay. That might make things interesting, being as she's the one who sued in order to take it out of the annexation.
Yes, sir.
I'm pretty familiar with that area. I know most of the church traffic, people will take a right to get in, but when they leave, they do go straight through and don't take that little angled road because you can't see. It's very difficult to get out. Adding 245 vehicles at prime time there is gonna make that very, very difficult, especially people coming home off 840, people heading out from Nashville that head to Hickman Dixon County is gonna be very difficult without a good sightline.
Yes. Yeah, there, there's, if you come to the, the square intersection, so to speak, there is adequate sight distance in both those directions that you can do that. Now, there, there is some work to be done. If you're turning right, as, as I'm coming out this way and I turn right, the stop bar as it exists is about three feet behind a fence row here. So we need to take in consideration how that fence is. Now, if this was moved over one lane width and the fence goes with it, then that assists in some of that sightline distance, but there is a, a fence line and fence corner that presents a bit of an issue if you proceed past the stop bar, but it does not totally impede your view to the right if you're, if you're facing out.
Isn't the, the, Overby Road is how wide?
Overby Road is, as it exists currently, the lanes, these lanes run about 17 feet. It, it varies a little. I believe we had 16 feet, eight inches.
Isn't there a 50-foot right-of-way?
There, there's not. No, ma'am. The, the city's standard is a 50-foot right-of-way. So if we were to go back and build all of this road today as a new road, the city would request 50 feet right-of-way with standardized lane width, storm drain, that sort of thing. However, all of this is county roads that the city's annexed, not been constructed. So this was not built, designed to any city standards as, as a majority of our roads in the city are.
Okay, but the county does, the county would have a 50-foot right-of-way.
They do not have a 50-foot right-of-way. There is no 50-foot right-of-way exist. The widest right-of-way that we can find is 27 feet. And again, that's not uncommon. Right-of-way widths and other things, they're, they're generated and amended over time. There's no mandate that, that every county road that's come in has a 50-foot right-of-way. So now, as they're widened, as development comes in, those maybe, those right-of-ways may, may become wider through property acquisitions, similar to what we're talking about today. But for us, at a, at a minimum, and again, the, the matter before you tonight is not necessarily to design this intersection, but to, to consider the requirement for the off-site improvements. Obviously, the design of that would go back through the city. The, the process tonight is, what's before the planning commission is to consider this development with the consideration of off-site improvements. It will then go to the BOC, Board of Commissioners or City Council. There'll be two votes there to consider that, and that's when the will, the real work of any off-site improvement agreements would take place. But at a minimum, we would request that if this is approved, it is approved with the language for the off-site improvements, and then have those off-site improvements negotiated between the developer and the Board of Commissioners such that we could, we could facilitate that at those meetings.
Mr. McCoy? Could just state your name for us? Yes, sir.
Manager McCoy with David Weekly Homes, Division President for David Weekly Homes here in Nashville. Couple of just, obviously, this is kind of a curveball for us all of a sudden. Number one, we, when we were looking at the community and the, the traffic count and the study that we did, and looking at Overby Road and understanding what we needed to do there for the improvements there, but not the improvements that would be considered far off-site improvements. We've not looked at it. We also understand that based on the level of the community and the trips there, we are, and I appreciate the comments I think Derek made about that intersection, and I think we've demonstrated pretty well that the communities, as far as the traffic count and the turns and the, the things that we're doing there, I, I think they fall in reasonable expectation that we would not be up at Overby and 100 doing any kind of turn late improvements or anything in that area. I'm just not familiar, I've been doing this for a while, and I'm just not familiar with that being, I'm, I'm familiar with ask, obviously, but I'm not familiar with the, the... There's a, I guess there's a burden being put on us. We're builder-developer, by the way. We're not just looking to, you know, we know we had a plan before that was 353 units. We came in with a plan that I think staff really liked. We've reduced that, we've reduced the traffic. But at the same time, the, and, and I'm sorry, but the economics of the deal start to get into question when we start looking at more and more expenses for us to leave this site and go do things, particularly in an environment where I believe the right-of-way may be in question. I'm not sure that, how the right-of-way, I was asking about condemnation, how does that work? Who can get, do they have to agree to sell the right-of-way to even get that process started? If the terms are that the community's approval is based on those, those things taking place at Overby and 100, there's a lot of gray area there about whether we can or can't execute that in the future, executed in the future. So I would ask, I would ask that not, and, and it seems to me, again, as you're improving your community, I totally understand going and asking for these kind of improvements. It's not something that I wouldn't say, if I were sitting in your shoes, I'd kind of want to do the same thing myself. However, with the scale that we are, the size of the community, being the builder-developer, it will put an economic burden on us to make this go forward. I just don't know that it's been, it's not been an requirement, it looks like, out on 100 so far in some of the other intersections that I've seen. And again, I know you're improving as you go along, and I'm sure you're adding more things into wanting to make a better environment along 100. I would just say that this is gonna be, if, if it was sitting there and the right-of-way was there and we could go in and make a simple, you know, we cannot kind of know the economics of that and what we control, but we don't in this case. So I would still ask that not be, that it would be removed from the condition of approval for the community, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Issue is, is, and I know everybody's thinking this, but if you approve this, let's just say we take the whole widening of Overby out of there, and we just say, okay, the minor, you've gotta do the minor off-site improvement of putting a turn lane right here on the Givens Cut through, and that's the requirement for David Weekly Homes to build this subdivision. What happens if they don't sell the right-of-way to them? And now we're stuck with a plan that can't be built because two private owners won't sell the right-of-way. It's a, it's a very gray area, and it's really hard for a developer to commit to something like that. He's kind of said it best, and I think that's kind of where he's coming from. Very difficult situation, being the city does not own the right-of-way there, so you can't condemn it. So now we're looking at Williamson County to try to condemn a roadway if they have no care or function over 350 feet of roadway. So it, it's a very difficult situation for... It's not out of a willingness to do improvements, it's out of a willingness of the unknowns that are incorporated.
Again, just as a reminder, the discussion before the board tonight is not to negotiate an agreement for any offsite improvements. The discussion for this is to move that forward, so if there are any discussions take place, that would take place between the city council or the Board of Commissioners and the developer. There, we, I understand there are several hurdles to get through, and there will be nothing that would prevent the BOC or the Board of Commissioners, even if this was to, this measure was to pass, the planning commission tonight with the removal of the request for the offsite improvements. The offsite improvements can still be made by the Board of Commissioners at their, at their effort to review this. So my effort tonight moving forward this is just make sure everyone understands all the discussions on the table, understands the hazards, that, obviously, there are several things to be reviewed, but we just want to make sure that we're doing it in such a way so that everybody has full disclosure as to what those limitations are. And then when we get deeper into the process, if this passes tonight, then those negotiations can be had.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Could we reword the condition then, to say that developer will work with the city to investigate further the recommendations along Givens Cut through prior to the BOC meeting? And then at the BOC meeting, we can have a little bit more information about everything, make a better condition of approval as opposed to bounding the development to widening all of over B road right now as part of this condition of approval.
That's a matter for, for the planning commission, they can word this as they choose to do so. Just being, being full disclosure, the BOC could still at their first reading request this exactly as is written, regardless of what the planning commission approves tonight. So just the understanding that if this language comes out, this language can be reinserted by the BOC at their consideration. So this, the removal of that's not binding. If that, as long as everyone understands that the BOC has the authority to have that, have that discussion. So I would not want to mislead you and say, oh, yes, I think we could recommend this, with the assumption that the conversation could not be had again. That's in fact not true, so I don't want to mislead anyone in that, in that process. That said, the planning commission certainly can reword this as they see fit, or whatever they believe will be the best middle-of-the-road, so to speak, application of this language.
And Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the inverse is true, in that if it's included here from the planning commission, it's not binding on the BOC to include it after their review.
That's correct, yes, sir. That's right. This in its existing language could be adopted by the, by the planning commission and be removed with no other discussion by the Board of Commissioners.
And can I just ask a question, because I'm wondering a little bit, and everyone here might be wondering too, but, but the whole purpose of this is to control the flow of traffic. Is that right?
Correct.
Right.
Or at least assist in the flow of traffic, yes.
So why wouldn't a traffic light work?
We have no control over what happens on Highway 100. Any discussion of a traffic signal or signalizing that intersection is the sole discretion of T-Dot. And my belief is that T-Dot would not find that this warrants a traffic, a lighted intersection.
Okay.
The lines on the side road aren't great enough to warrant the need for a signal? While we are adding, I think, 245 trips to the roadway is what has been stated. That's only in the P and P hour, so that's only one hour out of the day. In order to warrant a signal, it has to be for eight hours out of a day.
Right.
And the other hours are 30, 40 trips.
I'm just trying to think around this, but there's no way to think around it.
And no offense to this development, but if T-Dot was just in a giving mode and said they were willing to install a traffic signal, we would change their mind as quickly as we could to install one at Cumberland and 100 and not, and not here.
I know it, I know.
So hopefully, we would like to spend that money elsewhere if possible, so.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Sure.
I'm just thinking out loud.
One other statement, I forgot, it was in my notes right here, I just want to put it out there. There's only been one traffic accident along over B road in the past six years. We did pull that data. So it's, it's currently working as safely as can a road can, so.
Tim Turner with T-Square Engineering. Only thing I want to make sure that we agree with all the comments except for that one.
Yes, sir, I understand completely.
The road improvements.
Yes, sir.
So either way this goes, they're agreement with everything except for that one.
Yes, sir. And certainly, I can't speak for the BOC, the Board of Commissioners, City Council, but I, we did review this, this proposal at our last BOC meeting afterwards, discussion, and there was no, there was no one expressed a desire not to see the project go forward, but there were some concerns about traffic and access and those sorts of things. So we're just trying to make sure every base is covered, every question is answered, so when agreement is reached, everyone understood how we arrived there, what we're doing next.
Over B road at that intersection, if that sight distance got improved, because it's not a vertical sight distance, because I just came from there. It's, it's the mound of dirt and the grass, the tall weeds and everything that are right there that causes the sight distance, from what I could tell.
If you're taking the angled road?
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, sir.
It's because, it's because of that private landowner that it seems to me that if that were safe fact, then that sight distance would.
There's some to that. Obviously, the difficult part is you can negotiate that intersection in such a way that you have some sight distance. The difficulty is, yet we have to consider the ability for every driver and every person to be able to successfully negotiate over their shoulder through what effectively would be their back window to obtain that, to obtain that sight distance. So that's part of our.
It's not a vertical, it's more of a horizontal.
Correct. So, so there are, that's the primary concern, is the mobility and the, the city's ability to ensure that basically most drivers, if not all, could successfully negotiate looking over their right-hand shoulder through what would effectively be their back window if they're driving a four, four-door car.
Can we reword this to take this extension or the improvements to over B, how can we reword this and get an approval tonight to go forward that developers could live with?
That's a discussion for the developers and the planning commission, I understand.
We're saying right now, the way it's worded, we can't.
Right. Sure.
But we do want to move forward.
Right?
Yeah.
So.
I think that if, no matter how it was submitted tonight, for or against, it could go to the board and the board could review. The board is going to be the actual system that's going to regulate and enforce that. So it might give you, it might give you some time to kind of review a little bit more, if that's how this board proceeded tonight, to kind of have a better game plan to present to the five members of the Board of Commissioners. And just a random thought, thinking if we were going to abandon the 27-foot on, on over B East, perhaps we could go to the Triangle property owner and say, we'll give you 27, you give us on the other side 20, 25, or you know, a land swap. I don't know if that's something like that is possible, but if we're abandoning that other road, you possibly add it to that Triangle piece and try and swap the other side.
Yeah, there are, there are some side negotiations to be had here. Again, if we're looking to do that just internally, and I certainly do not want to speak for the property owner for that triangle, that would be out of line on my part. However, it, my suspicion is that corner is going to be commercially developed. Obviously, it will, given the access there. So internally, our discussions have been that we, the city, would not allow the over B road east or the angular road to be an access point to that commercial. If that was going to be developed, we would require them to use the over B road square intersection as we know it, and use that access as a back access on the, on the angled road. So there are some negotiations to be had with a few property owners. I get that. We just want to be really careful as to what happens to that intersection, so we can, we can move that forward. If there was some language to satisfy both sides, so to speak, if there was some language that simply said, there'll be a negotiation regarding intersection improvements at Highway 100 and over B road, or over B road east, and those, those negotiations should be had with the, with the developer and the Board of Commissioners. Same thing, different language.
I understand. It goes to them either way.
Right.
I understand that.
So.
It's always good to have support from the planning commission.
Sure. So I mean, if it made the developer feel more comfortable with the understanding that that language is not binding, then you could simply word that such a way where offsite improvements are recommended, such that the intersection of over B road and Highway 100 is improved.
So a conditional approval is?
We would just simply replace this, this paragraph with what was, what was just said.
And just like Blake said, what if we go to the two property owners and they say, we're not giving you any ride?
Right.
Then what happens?
I think that's a little bit down the road for us to get to, given the fact that neither one of those property owners know they're a part of this discussion right now.
But we're committing to something that, you know, we don't know. We're going to get approval without condition, and we want to eventually do the project.
Sure. I don't, just to increase your level of comfort a little bit, this is not a situation where the staff is going to lead this development out to the developers in the city to negotiate. Once we get to that point, obviously, we understand that we're going to have to engage the property owners, the neighbors, all that goes on and be a partner in that. Where, there's, I would, maybe I should have said that to begin with, but.
As long as that's the case, then we're good with it. If we can reword that to say that intersection, we're good with that.
Yes, sir.
I think your fear of not having ingress egress to that property based on this comment should not be there. I've developed, or tried to develop a piece of property where we could not get ingress and egress, and you can't afford to spend any more money than you have on.
A little bit of drawings until you know you've got complete access. Fortunately for this project, there is a road, you do have access. Now, it's, the discussion is whether it's improved or not improved, or whether it's, it takes a certain path. The ingress egress does exist for you, so, and I think you saw from the city manager and the mayor that there is a positive attitude towards solving this situation and making it good for the city as well as for the developers. So I think you don't think that we don't want you, don't think that we don't understand lack of ingress egress, because you've got several builders on this thing, and we all do.
I just want to make sure that wording doesn't say the whole street, over B street. We can say the intersection there, and we're good with that.
Let me see if I can take a shot at this.
Do we, we've only talked about.
That's what I'm saying, we're going to talk about the other two variances. Not sure if there's any discussion to be had on them, but not sure if there was anything more to that than just the statement of the variance.
Which would be the side setback variance going from seven and a half feet to five feet, as well as the sidewalk variance being requested to reduce the required length by 185 feet along the south side of the primary access road.
There was a note in there, the biggest thing on the, on a small setback is your HVC equipment usually being on the side of the homes, and they had a note to be on the rear of the property. So that would be huge to still be able to maintain proper drainage between lots. And if staff has reviewed it from a building inspector's side and a, and a planning side, and then put a positive feedback on that, so.
Yes, sir.
With setting those air conditioning units to the rear of the property, are these going to be slab homes or crawl space homes? Y'all are known for strictly slab homes over the years.
We have a variety, based on what we're looking at on the engineering so far. For the most part, we're either crawl space, or we do have basements that are going to be in the community. So we're trying desperately not to do a blown-out masquerade, just keeping, you know, we have lots of great homes that back up to beautiful area, and we ridged line the roads in there to eliminate some of the great challenges that we had. So yes, we'll be mostly on, we may have a few slabs in some of the area, but for the most part, it's crawl space and a basement.
Reason for the sidewall, we have, if you look on the south side of that entrance road, that's where our septic soil is, our soil area, and so we can't infringe on that. And so the staff was, was in agreement that, that we would have a crosswalk at the little roundabout and then have one-sided sidewall.
Just on that main entry road there, then it would go to two on the interior?
Yes, sir.
Just a random note, for seven years, I've heard, where's the amenities, where's the pool? And so it was, it was great to see that on there.
We noticed the same thing, and that, that's kind of what we do, is building that neighborhood in the community, and then branding that. We felt like it was, it will be a differentiator from the other communities that we've been able to see in the community so far.
Sure. On that note, do you have a calculation for the total area of improved open space?
So you're required 4.41 acres, and we're 4.8. So we, we've gone over that. Most of it's in the amenities, all use the screen right, so most of it's there in the amenities, and then there's a little bit there in the walking trail beside the decentralized treatment station. So we were over what's required as far as improved open space.
Okay. I'm going to have to refresh my memory. I thought when the regulations got changed, that the improved open space requirement was at 10% of the total land area. Is that not correct?
I would have to go back and look. I believe that is the open space requirement, not the improved open space. I know that there's a big difference in general open space, which would include any of your drip fields, anywhere that's not improved, and then specifically the improved having a much smaller number.
Yeah, I'm in the regs right now, trying to find it. I just haven't found the exact percentage in here yet.
I had one question. I believe when I was reading through the plans, it stated that the homes would include hardy board, I think shaker as well as normal horizontal boards, is that correct?
I'm sorry, you were talking about the hardy?
Correct. I believe, when I was reading through all the documentation, that y'all stated the homes would be hardy board, or would, they said would include hardy board. Does that mean some brick, some hardy board?
Will be brick, stone, and hardy board across the board.
No vinyl sided on the back or any of that?
No, the only vinyl we use today would be a porch ceiling.
Just wanted to clarify.
Additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion? Just for what it's worth, I did finally find the answer here. So it said required open space is 10% of the total area, and then at least 50% of that land shall be improved open space. So that would be 5% of the total land area. Which would be 5.42 acres by my really short, quick elementary calculations.
You have to take out the right of way area for that.
Okay, is that correct, Mr. Sullivan? Okay, cool.
Sir, let's hear it. I make a motion for a positive recommendation with the inclusion of the staff comments, with the exception of the widening of over B road, such that that would be modified to state that the developer would negotiate with the Board of Commissioners regarding improvements to the intersection of over B road and possibly Givens Cut and Highway 100.
Thank you, sir. Could I go first?
I'll second.
You have second. Burks first, Senyard second. Additional discussion or questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Senyard?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Bert? Oh, sorry. Sorry, you already voted, never mind. Butler?
Aye.
Callie? Jenkins?
Aye.
Quals? Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you guys very much.
And thank, and just quickly, thank everyone for their discussion. We'll follow up this meeting with the developer, their engineer, to start working on property owners, access points, all those sorts of things. So rather than go to those meetings, having to have this discussion, again, we'll attempt to bring solutions to that. Thank you.
Move to item three, sidewalk discussion, Sweetbrier Springs subdivision.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have a slide I'll bring up. As you may recall, that Phase One of Sweetbrier, Sweetbrier Springs subdivision was brought to the city in 2000. the city in 2002, I believe. And I'll have Keith to bring, to bring this up. I'm gonna remove this just so you can hear, hear me speak, but I'll, what we're, what we're looking at, if you look behind you, may be easier. The, if you're looking at this, this is Sweetbrier Springs, Phase One and Two. This is directly across from Westwood Elementary School on Highway 96. Everywhere where there is a home, from this lot here, or this lot here, if you're looking on this side, everywhere there is a home in this subdivision was Phase One. Phase One comes in here, stopped here, made its way up here to this house and stopped. Everything around the circle, or complete the circle, so to speak, is Phase Two. As a part of the approval for Phase Two, there was a discussion for the installation of sidewalks in Phase Two specifically, which the developer agreed to, and then further discussion regarding the completion of that sidewalk within the loop and along the roadway here, such that the sidewalk would effectively begin as you enter the subdivision here at the first house, make your way up here, have a crosswalk here, and then the sidewalk will be on the interior of this loop all the way around. Phase One, as it exists, has no sidewalks and no sidewalks were required as a component of Phase One development. As we look at this today, lot, this lot has a sidewalk that's installed around the perimeter as, as required, and these two lots have sidewalk installed. No other sidewalks are included in the subdivision at this time. We, we struck a bit of a dilemma on, on this that may require some Board of Commissioners approval if we were to go forward. That is, that, and any agreement that would take place with any developer to install sidewalks anywhere along Phase One, because they weren't previously required as a part of the original Phase One approval that came to the Board of Commission, or the Planning Commission in the early 2000s, would not be appropriate for consideration of Phase Two. We could require sidewalks in Phase Two as a part of the approval for Phase Two. We could not require the installation of sidewalks in Phase One as a part of the approval for Phase Two. The reason for that is there, there, the only bond that's in place for any improvements on Phase One are specific to the roadway and storm drain infrastructure. So, if the city were to choose to go forward with the installation of sidewalks in Phase One, that would have to be a contracted agreement between the Board of Commissioners or the city, and whatever contractor they chose to partner with for the installation of sidewalks within Phase One, which presents a bit of an issue for us specifically. Outside of that, even if we could go through and approve the sidewalks in Phase One, we have a couple of concerns, and again, I will point to the, the screen to the right. We've gone out and taken a look at this, and for the proper installation of sidewalks, all of that sidewalk work has to take place within the city's right of way, as depicted by this yellow line. Everything on the roadway side of the yellow line is city property. Everything on the home side of the, of the line is the homeowner's property. And going back and looking for the grades for these sidewalks, we've, we've identified a couple of issues specifically. That is, along this, these two lots, if you're driving into the subdivision, take the first right, or the house on the corner, and the house here, the slope along this corner and along the front yard of these two properties, and the slope along the front yard of these properties would require the installation of a retaining wall along the city's right of way, such that it could facilitate the proper installation of a sidewalk. Sidewalk requirement is that, to me, ADA, the sidewalk requirement can follow the slope of the road uphill or downhill to a grade of 8% or higher than that, based on some guidance that's not ADA, but in, just in accordance with. The slope of the sidewalk left to right cannot exceed two degrees. There's no way that we can install a sidewalk along these, along these three lots, or along these two lots, without substantial grading and the installation of a, a retaining wall, such that the sidewalk in these areas could be ADA requirements for the two degree left to right slope. The second concern that we have within that is the driveway, any, any portion of a driveway, in this case, either the four or five feet, depending on the width approved, the section width of the sidewalk within the driveway must also meet ADA, and cannot be greater than 2% degrees left to right. So in addition to the installation of a sidewalk that would require a retaining wall along all of these lots, we would also have to remove the sections of, of driveway for each of these lots, remove them, install the sidewalk such that it meets ADA, and then replace the driveway outside of that, which, which would create a substantial slope and angle at this driveway, not so much this driveway, certainly this driveway, this driveway, and this driveway. Lastly, our concern is that if the sidewalk were to be installed, it would terminate approximately here, with no further sidewalk access that would get you to Highway 96, and certainly not any sidewalk that, or crossing, or crosswalk, or any other thing that takes you out of the subdivision into the school property. So there's nowhere for a sidewalk or pedestrian to go. If they're utilizing the sidewalk expecting to negotiate this intersection, there's nowhere for them to go within that. So, having said all that, and having brief discussions with the builder, not a lot of discussion with the builder, our suggestion, or for your consideration, that there's more for discussion tonight, if there's no action to be taken. We'll have to come back to, with the, with the contractor on this. But our suggestion is to either have a fuller discussion with the BOC regarding their appetite to install sidewalks and retaining walls, which would be owned by the city in these sections, or to go back, grant a waiver on not to require sidewalks within these sections, and simply remove the sidewalk at this lot, this lot, and this lot. We could continue as is, to require sidewalks in these areas. The sidewalk will simply terminate at the corner of this lot in this area, and terminate at the corner of this lot in this area. Again, obviously, intention is good and pure, we understand that, and sometimes looking at plans that are 2002 plans versus 2017 plans, obviously, they don't, they, sometimes they don't mesh. So, it's a simple oversight. It sounds more complicated really than it is. Again, it's a well-intentioned effort. Going back and look at the practical application of it, it was just simply a miss. So, with that, we would just need some feedback from the Planning Commission regarding your, your thoughts as far as, or any, any other member for that matter, regarding your thoughts as to how to proceed with, with this thing as a discussion, either for consideration of not requiring the sidewalks, or consideration of a follow-up with the BOC for full disclosure of the work to be done along those lots. So, again, this is just more for discussion, just presentation wise, and then we can follow up, certainly formally at some point. But we were hesitant to have the, the builder continue with sidewalks. Some of these lots are under construction, although they're not grassed, they, all of the work is not done. We were hesitant to require them to continue that work. It's the same builder for all the lots, so it's not such an inconvenience. We have requested that on some of these lots, they hold up on the sidewalk until we get a definitive answer, just to make sure. So, that's kinda food for thought tonight, and we'll go back as, as you prefer. But we did wanna bring that hurdle to your attention, so we can get some direction as to where to go next.
Mr. Collins, was there not a requirement in Phase One that the sidewalk be part of Phase One?
No, sir.
It just got added in in Phase Two somehow?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The requirements changed from the time of date?
That's correct.
I guess we just didn't catch the fact that there was none on the rest of it?
Yeah, and again, well-intentioned, no issue at all. I think everyone understands that. But with that gap in time, and this development is taking, I think we all may recall that this development has been somewhat of the poster for the extension of bonds from year to year to year, because it's my understanding this is the longest living bond in the, in the city of Fairview. Again, this bond for the road was initially, the first extension was in 2003, which puts us now at 17 years, year after year for that. So, I can certainly understand the oversight. I get where that is. I understand the discussion. Again, it's a well-intentioned error. No, no one would've thought to look back that far and see the issue. However, when we get ready to start the installation of these things, obviously, we recognize there's a problem. We'll make sure we correct it before we go too far with that, so.
And in lieu of sidewalks on both sides, as our requirements mandate, the developer agreed to put it on the interior and then run it out to 96. And then it just, you know, you always try and create walkability, you're trying to find creative ways, but I just don't think it was really dug into about the feasibility. And so, in theory, when we stood here that night, he said, yeah, awesome, we'll run sidewalks to 96, and now it just doesn't, it's not a feasible installation.
Yeah. What really got our attention to, what really brought the question about, honestly, was the slope of these lots. That's really how we arrived at, at the question. Because with the slope of the lots, what really brought the attention to it was the remediation of the driveways that would, would be required. And once we got into remediation of the driveways, we start looking at the slope of the lots, then we looked at the slope of the lots across the street, and that's really how we arrived at, at the concern for how we got there. Had these lots been flat and significantly closer to ADA requirements, if they are, honestly, the sidewalks likely would have been installed, and there would've been no, no discussion. So it was a lay of the land question brought about after the fact. So, if we were going to offer a suggestion, we would offer to go back to the builder at this point, and in lieu of the completion of these sidewalks, to make the requisite amount donation to the city sidewalk fund, so that we do get use of the sidewalk money. We just do it in such a way that it wouldn't bring about a walkability issue specific to this loop. So, again, nothing for discussion tonight, but we will likely, if there are no objections voiced by the, by the Planning Commission, we will likely reach out to the builder, make sure they are comfortable with that, and then bring a solution back to you. But I wanted to have discussion prior to discussing a solution for that, so.
So right now, there's like three or four homes with sidewalks, and that's it, or?
Yeah, yes, sir. All of this is under, these homes are, on this side, are not required to have sidewalks. The interior lots, there are no homes built on this section at this time. The homes in this section are substantially complete. The sidewalks that exist are around this corner and on these two lots. These, these lots do not have sidewalk installed. So the removal of the sidewalk we're talking about are these, these two lots around this corner, and then we would go back to the developer and suggest sidewalk fund for these lots and these lots.
Would there be any reason to just try to work it out, where you can do it on just interior and not going to 96? I know that's still one, you know, driveway that would need a retaining wall, but it's only one.
The, that would, we would need to have a couple of things to take place. The city, the Board of Commissioners would have to approve.
Right.
The sidewalk work, and again, the, the.
I guess I was thinking it's less lots, and then it does make a walkable path for the neighborhood, you know, people, if you're trying to create a.
Sure.
Walkable community.
Staff, we're, we're, we're okay with, with either or, but we would have to go back and give BOC approval to do, and then contract this out. What we would likely have to do is negotiate this with the property owner, I mean, the, the city and whatever contractor was there to do this work, because the contractor doing this work would be the contractor who owned the roadway, not necessarily the individual builder, or the builder doing these. I will tell you that these, these three property owners and this property owner have been very vocal about not having the sidewalk installed, because it, it results in, in the substantial changes there to the driveway that. So, again, but that's clearly open for discussion with the Board of Commissioners. Again, we have no preference. We just know we need to bring about some suggestions for a resolution to you.
I think of Castleberry and the backside ended up having sidewalks, and I think that some sidewalks are, are better than none, having lived in Cowls Creek, and there is no sidewalks, and everybody's always in the road. And so maybe, you know, if we can just do just Phase Two, where they, they come out at the ends of the interior circle, and not, and not go to Phase One.
Yeah.
Just finish that connectability where it gives them a little bit of a loop.
Sure.
In Phase Two, and Phase One never had it, never will. It was a good thought. And then hopefully, we can recoup some expense for the sidewalk fund on the ones that don't get installed, because he, he did plan on installing them.
Forget Phase One. They didn't, they, they didn't bank on it in the first place, and, and I don't think I would want a sidewalk.
So.
If I'd been living there all that time.
So then for, for us, just as a matter of how clinging to keep this, to, to do this, what we would then do would be bring this matter back to you at the next Planning Commission meeting, and it would simply be to amend the last action not requiring sidewalk in Phase One, and then we will give out the developer and have them terminate there, I believe, on that lot, and terminate on their last lot.
Yep.
And, and proceed.
Simple.
So, just wanna make sure everyone, it's one of those things, again, it's a 17-year gap. There's really no way to manage that, but once we saw it, we need to bring that back to you. So, so we'll certainly have that for your consideration at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for that.
All right, we'll move to bonds and letters of credit. Number one, Cumberland Estates, Phase Two Performance Bond in the amount of $439,000. Will expire October 10th, 2020. And no action needed? Is that correct? If, if you guys have the, the right to call, right?
Yes, sir.
Just more of a notification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or discussion before I move to item two? Item two, Fernville Springs Apartments, recommendation from staff to create a performance bond of $65,200. Did I say that correctly?
That is correct.
It's not lowering, it's creating.
Now, that's, uh, this is, uh, the apartments came back a couple of years ago, and they've been on hold, but he's ready to get started with those. So the approval was done, I believe, in 18. No bond was set, and he's ready to begin construction.
Okay. And so there will be action on this to set the amount?
Make a motion to set a performance bond for Fernville Spring Apartments in the amount of $65,200.
Second.
Go ahead. Burks, Jenkins? Roll call.
Burks?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Quals?
Aye.
Shoeless?
Aye.
Senyard?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go to reports for discussion information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, like I said earlier, we did have several notes on here. A lot of that just is, sometimes sensitive stuff again, or just little things that we need noted but aren't required right, right at the time. So if you see those, yes, we have cleared up a lot of the contingencies, but there are some notes that are still required. And other than that, thank you all for discussion tonight. That's two, two big subdivisions that we have moving forward, and I appreciate the discussion and thoughts into each of the items.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins, city manager?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. I hope most of you received an email that I sent today regarding the, the recrafting of our commercial and residential zoning. Right now, we have a pretty aggressive schedule to have that before this body at the November 10 Planning Commission meeting. That's a lot of work to do and not a lot of time. The email that I sent out just asked your preference, whether you would prefer to look at the commercial or the residential. The reasoning for that is the two of those, if you try to do both, they're, they, the language can be a little overlapping, can be a little confusing. I thought it would be best if we separate those out. Also, given the fact that we're gonna be seeking some help and advice from some other municipalities, it just seemed to be easier to have a group focused on commercial, a group focused on, on residential. So, once I get all of your feedback back, I will put those together. Also, just as a reminder, knowing that this work will take some discussion between more than a few of the Planning Commission members, and possibly some Board of Commission members, the fact that we're gonna have these the fact that we're going to have these discussions and, and meet together will trigger the Open Meetings Act and Sunshine Law. So once we get those committees formed and we get those meetings scheduled, we'll advertise those on the city's website, just so that we know when we meet, we've advertised those. Again, they're discussion, they're participatory. No votes will take place, no official action will take place, but there will be recommendations made to both bodies, and we want to make sure that we've made that as open and clear as we possibly can. So once I get that information from you, we'll go back, put those schedules together, and work as aggressively as we can to get those, those definitions made. The process for that, if all goes well, because we're changing zoning, there are two readings required by the Board of Commissioners. So if we get this in substantially a complete form approved by the Planning Commission at the, at the November 10 meeting, that gives us the December meeting to come back if we need to, to make any adjustments. We can get through the Board of Commissioners and hopefully start January with a completely revised set of commercial and residential zoning. I think if we look for November 10, the December meeting is an alternate date. We have the planning, those BOC meetings in between. We'll have enough to facilitate all of the work that needs to be done, so January we'll, we'll be ready to go. So, and thank you in advance for all your work on that because it's going to be a lot of work. So, that's all I have for you, sir.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
Aye, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to communication from the Planning Commission members. Commissioner Burks?
I appreciate, Wes, you having such a large contingent out tonight. It got a little empty when they left. But no, I do appreciate them coming out and being able to answer questions and having everyone they need. Unfortunately, that intersection is very strange. It's always been strange, and it's going to require a little bit of something to make it better. Having driven on it many times, it's, it's bad. It's just, it's just bad. So we don't want it to be unsafe for our residents or anyone else traveling through our community. So hopefully we can figure that out, and I appreciate their willingness to discuss it. That's all.
Sir, Ms. Shoeless?
Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Senyard?
Nothing.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, um, city manager Collins, I will volunteer for the, the commercial side of development. And I really enjoyed the discussion tonight around two different things. I feel like as, as a board, we have constantly been battling against correcting mistakes from the past, and I feel like tonight we're like actually a team, working together, knowing like, here's this thing that sucks from the past that we're trying to resolve and work around somehow. It just feels really good to be up here with you guys, trying to make things better for the future.
Sir, Mr. Callie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Qualls? Mayor Blade?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I'd just like, uh, going record, I'd like to be on either one of those committees if you chose to put me there.
Residential it is. Thanks, sir.
I'll also go residential, and, and thank you staff for grinding. I know there's a lot of big projects going on right now and keeping us pointed in the right direction. With all this overload of information and great information and digging in, it's good to see, refreshing to see.
Yes, sir.
Entertaining a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.